Yeah, it's that time. I'm gonna, I'm gonna close the door. Do you wanna?
You need a gavel, where's your gavel?
Doesn't sound very good on the plastic table.
But you know what?
There's chairs over here in the corner too, and over here. I am gonna ask the city manager a couple of questions, so I open this meeting again. Okay.
I just wanna make sure you got all the things through.
I have one, I have, yes, I have two.
And John and others. The social health, she provided very help.
Okay, fine.
And then for, for the audience, and I just asked on the copy of the development, the copy of the development plan in the act was not, was not a good call in the state. So I've asked, I'm gonna go make comments about, so we'll have a better chance to follow along.
Thank you, Alex. Ready, Hector, ready, Hector? Okay, so mics are on. All right, we will call to order the regular Talent City Council Meeting of September 3rd. Roll call, please.
Mayor Ayers, flag.
Here.
Councilor Paramiller.
Here.
Councilor Byers. Councilor Peseza.
Here.
Councilor Medina. Councilor Penamara.
Here.
Councilor Coley.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you, Hector. Next item on the agenda is additions or corrections to the agenda, and also council recusals. So we'll start with Councilor Penamara.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I was wondering, the Together for Talent people are already here? And if they are, is, is anybody for the Together for Talent presentation here? Oh, well, if they're not here, there's no point.
Nobody here from Together for Talent?
You have a, oh, no. For talent, but the actual, there's a Together for Talent Committee that has mine, and I, I was gonna ask to move that up.
You have a raised hand.
Huh?
You have a raised hand.
Oh, so maybe they're on Zoom.
Possibly.
So there is one person for Together for Talent.
On, on Zoom.
Yeah, do you wanna move it up?
Yeah, if assuming, yeah, I see Shane is there, yeah. Since Shane is online already, I'm going to ask to move that item, rather than making Shane wait till the very end of the meeting, move that up, item 9.4, up to, uh, right, can we just put it after number four, public testimony?
Sure.
Okay.
Does any from the council object?
All right. So I just wanted to let Shane know that Together for Talent will be coming up pretty quick.
Are there speaker requests ones for that?
For that?
Yeah.
No, it's, it's an item on the agenda, so it would be, that would be after the public test.
Thank you. Certainly. Um, okay, and any other changes to the agenda?
Thank you, Mayor, yes. So I'm going to ask you not just to remove from the consent calendar, but to strike entirely 7.3, 7.7, 7.8, and 7.9. Several of those are Urban Renewal Agency, well, um, yes, 7.7, 7.8, and 7.9 are Urban Renewal Agency minutes, and should not be, should not be requesting your approval of them. I'm asking, requesting that we, that staff have a chance to edit 7.3 and bring those back as well, because there's an error, and
Okay.
a sensitive error that we wanna make sure that we get right. And then the last, my last request is, no, it's not my last request, I had multiple requests. I'm also requesting that you remove item 9.2, because really that should be discussed subsequent to the executive session that you all will finish the evening with, and that topic could be addressed later. And finally, I'm requesting the addition of a new item to new business, which would be a workers' comp resolution. And for council members' awareness behind your agendas, in front of you, you have several items. So these are additions to the pack, essentially. The first is the written comments received on the vacation, which staff will summarize, but you know, you have them in writing, and we'll provide them as an addition to the minutes. There is a revised ordinance based on helpful comments from multiple folks to improve that ordinance. And, and then finally, a staff report and a resolution related to the workers' comp item that I'm requesting you add to the agenda.
And so we'll make this workman's comp item number 9.4. And then the comment, and the comment is for item, is for the public hearing, item 5.1. The ordinance is for nine, 5.1. And then the staff report is for item 9.4.
That's correct, thank you, Mayor, and are we missing any more speaker request ones?
Anybody else? Okay. 5.1. Okay, let the record show that we're striking from the consent calendar, item 7.3, which is the city council meeting minutes that need to be corrected before considered, and item 7.7, 7.8, and 7.9, which are Tura meeting minutes, that'll be forwarded to the Tura meeting. Are there any other corrections, or are there any potential or actual conflicts of interest to be declared?
Pardon me, Mayor, you reviewed those, thank you, and, and the additional changes, I think you had already mentioned, were night, removal of 9.2, additional.
Yeah, I think the thing I left out was removal of 9.2, thank you. For the record. All right, that's everything, I believe. So with that, we'll go ahead and move to item three, which is recognitions, proclamations, or community announcements. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's important to acknowledge that coming up between now and the next meeting would be the fifth anniversary of the Almeida Fire. I won't try to be too eloquent about that, but just note that we are in extreme fire danger right now. To, you can visit swofire.com to get the rules and regulations of what's acceptable. A reminder to sign up for Jackson Alerts if you're not already signed up. Simply Google or search Jackson Alerts, and that should get you there. And I believe this coming weekend, September 6th, is an emergency preparedness workshop sponsored by Together for Talent at the Talent Library from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. The, moving on from those items, we'll mention that the city is conducting a couple of job searches right now. We have, we're looking for both crew members for the Public Works Crew and a new Community Development Director/City Planner. Information on those positions are available through the city website and RV Cogs website. And a slight change to our normal pattern of meetings, the Planning Commission is going to be meeting next week, next Tuesday, for a study session. That's been added to the calendar and the information is on the city website. And finally, just a reminder that the Harvest Festival is going to be offered. If folks are interested in taking part in the wheelie fun parade or volunteering, we're still looking for volunteers. You visit talentharvestfestival.org. That's all I have.
Any other comments? I do wanna say, we are seeing Cecilia Bagnoli moving on to Central Point in a planner position there. And as someone who's had an opportunity to work with her quite a bit at the city, and, and with talent business lines, we wish her really well, and very excited for this great opportunity for her. And just wanted to say publicly how much we appreciate her involvement in our community and the incredible work she did while she was here. And, and also, our hats off to her for a great, great future in Central Point. Any other announcements? Also, I just wanted to mention, there's a lot of volunteer activities going on this weekend for the anniversary of the Almeida Fire. I know Cheryl Lashley is organizing, along with Carolina Marshall in Phoenix, a lining the streets with flowers. And the First Presbyterian Community Centers is doing some organization around that. And also, talent resident Cheryl Lashley, and then Talent Maker City is doing workshops that can be found. So there's, there's quite a lot of really sweet, positive stuff going on. Anybody else? All right. Next item on the agenda is public testimony. And this is where we put item, what was item 9.4 on the agenda, and this would be sponsorship of Together for Talent Committee, embody the future workshop, staff?
Thank you, Mayor. We, the, as the staff report described, Together for Talent is requesting support and agreement from the city council to hold a, and embody the future workshop here in Talent Community Center. I'm looking for the date to the separate email on the and, and the, the, I believe, more than care, I follow oh, Shane and/or Nicole are online. So Hector, could you promote both of them to panelists? So they might have an opportunity to address council and, and speak a little bit to the substance of the event.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Thanks, Shane, we do hear you.
Excellent. Is it all right for me to just go ahead and describe the workshop?
Yes, please, yeah. The council know a little bit.
Absolutely. So this workshop emerged from us considering how we could fulfill our role in the, in last year's Resolution 2024-79, our, the Resolution to Advance the Public Health Benefits of the Transition to Clean Air and Clean Energy Equipment and Appliances for the City of Talent. We, one of the items in that is for the city to encourage and provide resources to the Together for Talent Committee, among other entities, to work with community partners in educating and engaging the community on the pollution associated with natural gas use in buildings. So as we were going through, thinking about different ways in order to engage with the community, we met with the folks at the Elder's Action Network, which is a national nonprofit organization. And they conduct a really cool set of workshops called Future Design Workshops. The idea behind it is you bring together an intergenerational cohort of community members, elders, midlifers, and youth, to come together and envision the future of their community and what that looks like. And it gives youth an opportunity to imagine themselves as adults in that community. It lets midlifers imagine themselves as elders in that community. And, and elders, it lets them imagine what kind of legacy they'd like to pass on. And these workshops have been deployed in Japan and are used by many communities in Japan as a way to make policy decisions, where they've had a lot of studies done showing that the, the effects of the workshop actually help facilitate long-term planning and decision-making versus potentially less sustainable short-term decision-making over land use and city planning. And so really, we see this as an opportunity to bring together sense of talent in a really fun and interesting way. A way that a lot of people will be able to come in and craft a vision. And we feel like this is a good opportunity for us to be able to tackle one of the items in that resolution.
Great, thank you, Shane. Are there any questions or comments of staff or Shane? Council Penamara?
Yeah, I just wanna say, I'm not the liaison anymore for Together for Talent, but in her absence, I just wanna say, I'm just very excited about this. I think it's a really innovative opportunity, and I'm so glad that we're bringing this, these ideas to talent.
Any other comments? I think, was Nicole elevated, did she wanna add to the conversation?
Yeah, I'm here, can y'all hear me? Yeah, thank you. Yeah, no, Shane's just, really, I'm just, I'm so grateful and, and just like honored to, to work with him, you know, beside him or behind him, actually, on this project, I, he really has, you know, done all the research and created the concept note, and yeah, I'm just, I'm just happy to support and kind of help facilitate logistics and things. But we did have Elder's Action Network join us at a meeting virtually. And yeah, just really excited about this, and hoping that you all are happy to support us with this.
Thank you, any questions or comments? Yeah, Alex?
Clarify, I believe, do your email leave that's beyond the $500 allocated for the committee, so this is an addition.
Sorry, I'm having a little trouble hearing, or it's cutting in and out.
Well, maybe I'll try to go slower and speak more clearly. So I just wanted to make sure that the $250 you're requesting is beyond the $500 that the city allocates to the committees.
It is, yes, please, and that is a request that, you know, we do have the, the $500 budget, but we've had quite a few discussions in the last few months about that, and hope that next year we can be a little more involved in the process of creating a budget for the committee. We do, you know, host quite a few events and workshops. And that $500 will go quickly, even just in printing materials that we need for things. So yes, we'd like to, for this specific workshop, ask for a small budget to provide just some refreshments. And there is, and then we'll, we'll also have materials we'll need printed. There is also, the, the facilitators are from out of the area and are coming up really at their own cost. But if we're able to contribute anything even to just their gas and coming up, they're going to have to find their own lodging, their, their organization isn't able to cover that. It's a pilot program that they're doing with this workshop, so that's not covered. Yes, so that's an addition.
Thank you. So what I, what I heard you say, Alex, is that the $500 that they are allocated is already exhausted, is that?
I had not had a chance to check on that budget, Nicole, I, I'm not.
It's not, because I believe the fiscal, because your, the year started in July, is that right? It doesn't go on the calendar year?
Correct.
Yes, so it is not. We just are, we, in having these conversations, and I've, you know, been bothering Alex and Hector a ton about lots of questions related to the committee and process and procedure, and have found that if something is needed beyond that $500, which we foresee being the case, that we could request it as a part of an approval for a particular event, workshop, that type of thing. So we're just sort of planning ahead, I mean, we could certainly take it out of the $500, but we feel we would need those funds also before July 2020, or June 2026.
Thank you for the clarification. All right, any other questions or comments? Council Coley?
Yeah, thanks for the great presentation and exciting event. My preference or suggestion for the funding would be that they take it out of their current fund, and when they have another event that requires additional funding on top of that, that they bring a request to council, and council can choose to fund that or not.
Any other comments? Council Penamara?
Yeah, I, I think I would be fine with that. I just always thought of the $500 as kind of like a baseline, just for the committee to function, and that if there is any kind of an event that's, that's named, that, that, that money is, would be made available. I'm just afraid that they'll be, just it'll just be enough in smaller things, and, and that the 500 really is supposed to be a baseline.
Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion. Council Penamara?
I move to approve the city's sponsorship through the use of city space and city communication vehicles of the embody the future workshop event. And also, provide a budget of an additional $250 to the committee for the event.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Are you gonna identify a budget, a line item, where that 250 is coming from? Would that be discretionary funding?
Where are we at with discretionary funding?
There certainly is balance available, that seems to be the most appropriate.
Okay, yeah, out of discretionary funding, then.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the city's sponsorship through the use of city space and city communication vehicles, and, and embody the future workshop in the amount of $250 of discretionary funding. Roll call, please.
Oh, can I just?
Yep. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't ask for discussion, discussion? Yeah, go ahead, Councilor Paramiller.
Yeah, I think that seems like a happy medium, because then if they do need to dip into their already allocated 500, they also still have that. And then I would just encourage the committee, similar to what Councilor Coley said, that if that is exceeded again, feel free to come back. And yeah, this is a really exciting event.
Council Coley?
Yeah, I agree with that, and I appreciate the discussion too of including the committees in the next budget cycle. I think the last few years, the kind of $500 has just been a thing that just gets set, and then there's an assumption that they can come to us with events and stuff, so maybe it'd be worth meeting with the committees when we do next year's budget and have a better understanding of what they're planning, and maybe what they're going to request, so we can think about it a little further.
Any other deliberation? I would just say, as a matter of fact, that if they were taking the $250 out of their budget, they wouldn't need to be asking for it, so. Council Penamara?
I just, I just noticed that Nicole's hand is up, I'm, I'm not sure if she had something else to add.
I'm, I'm not gonna take further comments and deliberations, so are there any other comments? All right, roll call, please.
Mayor Ayers, flag. Councilor Paramiller?
Yes.
Councilor Byers? Councilor Peseza?
Yes.
Councilor Medina? Council Penamara?
Yes.
And Councilor Coley?
Yes.
And just so you know, I only vote when there's a tie, so you don't need to call me. Thank you, Hector, you're doing great. I also wanted to make a comment. It was just a few years ago that the committees and commissions all did participate in the budgetary process. It started in the fall. This is for your information, Alex, it started in the fall. And they would, they would start to plan for expenditures for the following year, so that they would have those expenditures to you in their plan by the time you start engaging in the budget process. So usually, usually they started discussing it sometime like in October. By November, December, they have their plans to the city manager, that's how I used to work.
Thank you.
So I'll leave it, I'll just, that's just FYI. So with that, we'll go ahead and move on to public hearings. Item 5.1 is a consideration of Wagner Creek Road Vacation File.
There, there was one item for public testimony not on the agenda.
I appreciate that, my goodness. All right, there is a speaker request form, so Rita Allred, will you come forward to the podium and state your name and your city for the record?
Rita Allred White City. Okay. I'm here to ask for discretionary funding for the Talent Skate Classic that will be held October 11th. We're asking for the amount of $2,000. And we only have a few weeks to get this going, so we're having a meeting every Wednesday, and we just need the funds to get things secured to get it started. And we have tiers of sponsorship to raise money for the event. There are tiers of $250, $500, $1,000, and $2,000. And we will have age group category, and we're trying to get pros to come and have it be an annual event.
Thank you. So I'm gonna ask the council how you'd like me to proceed. I can either put this on other later in the agenda, or you can relax the rules, and we can discuss it at this time. What's your preference? I'm good with other. So this will come up in, later in the agenda.
Okay.
Much later.
And this will be for the grand reopening of Talent Skate Park.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
And we usually get to other around nine o'clock. Okay. Next item on the agenda is item number six, and that's the city manager and department reports.
All right.
Sorry. What? Didn't we just do that? Sorry, Brett. That was, that was a pretty sly move on my part if you asked me. Uh, item 5.1 is consideration of the Wagner Creek Road vacation file. VAC 2025-001 applicant, city of talent, staff report.
Um, thank you, man.
Do we open it first?
Um.
Or do you have a staff?
I'm happy to give a staff report, um, to start with. Um, and, uh, I'll, I'll just set the stage and then ask, uh, Ani to, uh, Ani Hunter's with me tonight. Ani is our, uh, RV com contract planner and doing, uh, yeoman work for the city and a number of different, uh, planning capacities. So, um, I'll just set the stage, as I said, and, and ask Ani to go through the, the proposal and, and the findings. Um, I, the, the first thing I'd like to make clear for tho- those of y'all who came to comment tonight. Um, we, we do have some technical rules around how we have to notice these kinds of things. And, uh, so my apologies if anything was, was, uh, confusing about, about the notice. But, um, all, all we're, uh, talking about tonight is vac- vacating, i.e. turning, uh, one portion of what is currently right of way into, uh, sorry for the jargon, fee simple land. So land that is owned outright by the adjacent property owner, in this case, the school district. Um, the net effect of that will be, um, a realignment of where, uh, Wagner Creek Road ultimately will be built. Um, the first portion of that will be built by the school district and their partners in the development of, uh, of the, the new facilities at the park. Um, but it does not, this, uh, this change does not have any impact on where the future alignment of, uh, Wagner Creek Road will be south of this property and doesn't have any effect on really when that will happen or how that will happen. So I'll ask, uh, Ani to now, unless there are questions about those just basics. I'll ask Ani to talk about this from a, from a sort of like technical land use perspective. Great, Ani, please.
The decision to approve a street vacation must comply with all applicable provisions of the Talent Zoning Code and, um, Oregon Revised Statutes, Chapter 271. Um, under the provisions of ORS.
Oh, no.
So. Um, under the provisions of ORS 271110, noticing requirements include publishing the notice in the city's official newspaper for two consecutive weeks prior to the hearing and posting the notice at each end of the proposed vacate, uh, vacation area within five days of the first publication. Um, the requirement or the required notices were published in the Rogue River Times on August 20th and 27th and posted onsite on August 22nd in full compliance with ORS 271110 and, um, Talent Municipal Code As provided in ORS 271130, city initiated, initiated, um, vacations, the city can initiate vacations proceedings without a petition. Um, it requires notice and public hearing. It cannot, um, vacate if majority of affected owners object or if a budding property is substantially devalued unless damages are paid and must comply or certify all taxes and liens are paid before approval. The findings are that one objection was received, but not, um, from a majority property owner. No budding properties would be substantially affected in market value. Property is not taxable and fee are free of city liens certified by the city recording office. All statutory standards have been met. In accordance with ORS 271140, title to vacate street or public area goes, um, to bordering property owners in equal portions following original boundary lines if dedicated by different owners. Um, the right of way dedication vacated land will revert to the original dictating tax lot and therefore the standard is met. Pursuant to TMC 17.1.20.08, um, a replatter portion of the plat can be replatted or vacated with an application, application signed by all property owners listed on the deed. Um, the ownership and consent standards were met. All deed property owners have signed the application. The Colbert Bill's annexation agreement is attached in the, um, exhibits. And ownership and consent requirements are satisfied. As set forth in TMC 17.20.080, replats or vacation applications follow the same process standards and appeal rights as subdivisions or partition approvals. Um, the procedural standards for vacations follow the same, for this vacation, follow the same process and appeal rights as the original subdivision or partitions. Therefore meets all the procedural requirements. As provided in TMC 17.20.080C, a replata vacation can be, excuse me, denied if it harms public rights um, or fails to meet criteria like setbacks or easements. The findings are that the street vacation meets all criteria and no denial factors apply. A new right of way will provide equal or improved public ass, access. Therefore, the standard is satisfied. Um, in conclusion, all statutory and municipal standards have been met. There is no basis for denial of the proposed street vacation. The Towne Community Development Department concludes that the proposed street vacation meets or can meet all applicable requirements outlined in the Towne Zoning Code and Oregon Revised Statutes, Chapter 271.
Thanks very much, Ani. Um, I, I'll just mention also the, the key edits that were made to the ordinance that you have in front of you versus what was in the packet. Um, the first is, uh, we used or changed it so there was consistent naming conventions of the tax lots throughout the, um, throughout the ordinance. Um, we, uh, with, uh, to the attorney Dave Lowman's assistance made, um, some tweaks to the language, uh, to make clear the, um, that the ordinance would be in effect at the time that's passed, but the vacation will take place when all the legal steps, uh, necessary for that vacation are completed. And that the key one there being the completion of the annexation, which we are at, the city has already taken all of your steps on, but we're, um, having trouble getting the final steps through the Department of Revenue. And then the most important substantive addition, um, is the addition of section two, um, under which the city is preserving any public utility easements within that, within that vacated right of way, um, in perpetuity. That was, um, I think good boilerplate language for us to add, um, but was, uh, additionally motivated by the comments that we were, the written comments we received from Talent Irrigation District.
Okay. Um, so I'll read the opening statement. The city of Talent is holding this public hearing on planning file VAC 2025-001 in accordance with Oregon Public Meeting Laws and ORS 271. The proposed action is an ordinance providing for the vacation of Wagner Creek Road right of way immediately south of Culver Road. The approval criteria are one, Oregon Revised Statute, Chapter 271 and two, Title 17 of the Talent, Talent Municipal Code. C, uh, evidence and testimony in this hearing must be directed towards these criteria and other criteria in the city zoning's code, comprehensive plan, and other applicable land use and development related regulations. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient clarity and detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond accordingly to the issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Any participant may request a continuance. In addition, a participant may request that the record, uh, that the record of the proceed- may request that the record of the proceedings.
Be, be, uh, held open for up to seven days.
Be held open for up to seven days. If you wish to speak, please complete the speaker request form and provide that form to staff. I'll just. I'll leave this to be edited for next time. Excuse me. Uh, so the public hearing on the Wagner Creek road, uh, vacation file VAC 2025-001 is called to order at 7:26 PM. Excuse me. The order of the proceedings will be disclose statements of bias or conflict of interest, if any. Staff report, written correspondence, public testimony, hearing closed. Notes, no further testimony from the audience. Council deliberations and decision. Uh, disclosure, I ask all members of the commission to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. Please indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact, bias, or conflict of interest, and indicate whether you intend to participate or abstain from the meeting. Anybody? That gave me pause for another drink of water. So you have given us the staff report? Has, uh, staff received any written correspondence on file VAC 2025-001?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we have. Um, you have, and, uh, they, those comments have been provided to you and will be included in the minutes to the meeting. Um, I think I can say without, um, risk of doing any injury to the intent of the comments, they, they generally fell into five categories. There were several, uh, several comments that were supportive of the, of the request. Um, in part, um, one, one in particular went into quite a bit of detail and appreciation for the process that the school district, uh, went through. There, the objections, um, there were some that were related to, um, the presentation of the, just the way that the process was described. Um, and I certainly would admit that I think it's a challenge for the staff to that this, this is actually a very narrow, um, action, and it's sometimes difficult to express that without getting into technical language. So, um, again, my apologies if, if what we were requesting wasn't clear. Um, there were some objections, um, that were largely or primarily, or in some cases entirely related to concerns about the future construction of that road, um, and whether that might in, you know, impact quality of life. But ultimately, I, I don't, the staff doesn't believe that's relevant to this question or, or not. In fact, uh, if anything, this vacation will move that roadway further away from the folks who are raising concerns about, about the impact of the, of the road. And finally, there were, um, there were questions, uh, there was the comments from TID that I mentioned that were expressing concern about the preservation of their, um, their access to TID facilities, um, that are currently within the right of way. It was not entirely clear to staff whether that they were concerned about, uh, easements that are already recorded uh, or, um, sort of de facto access that they have to public right of way. But either way, we believe the additional section that's been added to the, to the ordinance would address those concerns. So, um, unless there are other questions about the details of the comments, I think that's a, a summary.
Any comments or questions? I just want to ask a clarifying question. If I may, real quick, and then I'll take you, Council Penamorif. When you said, and if anything, this will move it further away. Uh, I want to clarify, you mean in distance, not in time, right?
Correct. Correct. Well, so the vacation, the, yes, correct. The vacation. I guess there's, there are different ways you could look at that. Um, but yes, what I meant is geographically, um, it moves the, the current right, right of way is, is adjacent to the subdivision. The vacation eliminates that right of way in favor of a future dedication to move that, that right of way further to the west.
Great. I, that's what I understood, uh, with understanding of the application, but I just wanted to clarify that for the record. Uh, Council Penamorif?
Yeah, clarifying question. I think you said this, but I missed it. Um, in what were the changes made in deference to, uh, TID's concerns?
So, uh, with the revised, um, ordinance that you have, uh, that is section two, uh, within the or date, the ordains, uh, the city hereby preserves the perpetual public utility easement for any existing public utilities located within the vacated area. There's some additional language to spell that out in a little more detail, but essentially, um, the city is recording, wi- will record, uh, with this, with this vacation that there remains a public utility easement.
Any other questions or comments?
So this language doesn't, um, ain't, doesn't, um, increase, uh, the rights of any utility on this land, does it?
Correct. No, it only preserves those rights that exist at the time of the vacation.
But I mean, and they would be preserved anyway. We're not putting something in writing that would be debatable later on. We're not giving anything away. That's what I'm questioning.
The, the, the gist of your question is accurate. The only caveat that I would say is, I think because TID has been around for so long, um, in some places where there, they exist in public right of ways, they may not actually have a recorded easement for their specific use. And that was what was unclear from their comment, whether, whether they actually have a recorded easement for this section of their, 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 um, their ditch. Um, but the statute, uh, makes clear that they, they have the, the right to expect that that, that that easement be preserved um, in, in cases like this.
Can I follow up again?
Uh huh.
Um, and there's no other utilities that are, that are using this area. It's just a ditch the TID is using, and they don't necessarily have any documentation for that, but we want to preserve their rights.
So, one, to be clear, we, I, we got this comment on Friday, weren't in the office Monday, and I just got it this afternoon, just missed their office hour. So I'm not sure whether they have a recorded easement for the section or not. But the, the language in the amendment, in the ordinance would cover us one way or the other. Whether there are, I, I don't know whether, um, there's a nat, any natural gas or other, uh, I think that's probably the only other likely candidate, um, but I'm sure the school district will be, uh, you know, um, re- responsive to any, to any easements that, that are there.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right. We'll go ahead and, uh, start with the public testimony. Yeah. So I'm going to take the speaker online first. Right? Um, and that is.
Um, sorry, that was, uh, Matt, Matt made his request, uh, via email, but he's here in person.
Okay. So Matt, if you'll come forward and state your name and city for the record?
Matt Lichtenstein, uh, Talent area. And may I request to go later if you have other speakers?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Uh, so we'll go ahead and call Cheryl Tuttle forward, and if you will state your name and your city for the record.
Um, sure. Cheryl Tuttle. I live in Talent, Oregon. And I live on North First, so it's not directly impacted by the road, uh, the proposed road, but I've got two questions. One, and I have to say, I think I'm preempting this. This is much earlier in the process than I have any idea, but when we got the paperwork in the mail, it raised a lot of questions. And so what I'd like to say is, I would like, like to request that you keep, um, Talent. stakeholders who live near there in the know. And two, would that have a timeline when you have it? It sounds like this is very, very, very early in the process. And so I'm sitting here with questions that nobody can answer at this point, so I apologize for taking up time. But I would appreciate that in the future you keep those stakeholders involved as well as possible. And I think that's what you're doing right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. And, and to that point, Alex said it's want to add, once, once this vacation is done, it would, if, if, if this vacation is done, it would be up to the school district then to keep the stakeholders in the know. Is that correct?
Um, well, I think there's, there are future land use actions that will be taking place that would require additional notices from the city as well.
Okay, very good. That's good to know. Okay, Aida. Are you here? There you are. Please come forward and state your, and city for the record.
Hello. My name is Aida Saracena, and I live in Talent. And I'm, I know that it's early in the process, but the maps or the paper is. Anyway, it's really difficult to decipher for me. Like where the road is going to be placed from the back fences of the properties around Nikoya. Because I live there. So that, and, and also, I don't know if I'm allowed to ask that, because I know we're just talking about the, the road.
Aida, can you speak into the microphone?
Yeah, yeah. But, but I would like to know if it's, if it's known, the distance that the Boys and Girls Club building will be placed from the fences that are on the back of Nikoya. And is that going to be a one or two story building? Because it's never been addressed as far as I know.
Thank you. Next is Lynette Fleming. Please come forward and state your name and city for the record.
My name is Lynette Fleming, and I don't actually live in the city limits. I live right across from where the entrance of Wagner is going to be on Culver Road at six four nine three Culver Road. And I do get irrigation water on that property, and it's right there at the intersection. So the, I've lived there for five years. And you have Culver Road, and there was a little turn before it. The cars that come along there use the railroad track as their starting point. On your mark, get set, go! And they were on a race. It's very noisy. It's a very noisy road. And so I, I've been trying to get an answer of where Wagner is going to come in. When we first learned about this, I, I went to the city planner. Nobody could tell me. Nobody has told me since exactly where it's going to be, because it will greatly affect my livability. And but apparently, it's not going to be the traffic from Wagner Creek Road. I, I grew up on Wagner Creek Road. It's a busy road, too. And I didn't want all of Wagner Creek emptying into Culver there, right in front of my living room. But it looks like it's just to service the Boys and Girls Club. Is that correct? Is that, is that driveway or whatever you call it, just to service the Boys and Girls Club?
Uh, to counsel whether.
Yeah, I'm going to say that you can make your testimony and you can write down.
Oh, I can't ask questions.
So we can't engage in discussion, but you can write your questions down and provide them.
Alex has my questions that I turned into the city, five questions, I think. I was hoping those would be addressed, but when will those be addressed?
I, I, at the council's pleasure, I think staff responding to the questions that are raised in, in verbal testimony is certainly appropriate, or I could directly to respond and write.
What, what does the coun, what please the council?
I, I, I think if, if staff's comfortable responding in the moment, it might be more efficient. But I'd leave it up to staff.
Any objections? Right?
And I just want to say probably some of my questions need to be answered by the school district, because I was concerned about the cost. Are we going to be taxed about it? But anyway, that, that doesn't affect you guys. So mostly I want to know exactly where it is, and I, I do want to caution about this intersection between Culver, Front Street, and Wagner. Already, there is, I think, some concerns. Especially if schoolchildren are going to be riding their bikes to this Boys and Girls Club or this playing field. There, there, it, it's not a very safe intersection, I don't think, because I bicycle myself into Talent and over to my family over on Second Street. So, so that's one concern. I want to know exactly where it's going to come in to Culver. Is it going to be in front of my living room window? And why we need another, why we need another entrance when there's already two entrances into the athletic fields there? I don't know why we need it. Let me see if I can think of some of my other questions. Look at my questions, Alex, see if there's anything pertaining to.
You have them here. So while I address them, when, after the testimony.
So my, my big concern is, how is it going to affect the property owner's livability with that additional road, the safety of that intersection? And that's.
Thank you. Alex, you want to answer those questions while we're still in the public hearing? You want to wait till we close the public hearing?
Maybe we could complete, while we complete the verbal testimony and I can address all the questions.
While we're still in the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. So Matt, this is, I'm going to, this will be your opportunity now.
Matt Lichtenstein, Talent Area. And I just wanted to express that I generally do support the project that's going forward with the school district. I do share some of the concerns about notifications and so forth. And when the project's kind of pieced out a little bit, it's hard to see what the future entails.
Sorry, Matt, can I ask you that?
Yep, sorry about that. So generally, yes, we do support it. Thank you for the opportunity. Notifications have been a little challenging, so I, I know that the municipal codes and your codes only require a certain distance, but I believe that the entire project should be notified, the future road. So that's just, so thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Last speaker request form is for Nathan, Nathan Emerson, CSA Planning. State your name and city for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Nathan Emerson with CSA Planning, forty four ninety seven Brownridge Terrace, Metford, also with our talent, if it matters. And I'm here representing the school district who owns a property to the west of the vacation area. And I'll just make two quick points, I think. One, the vacation area that we're talking about is very close to Front Street has been, has been mentioned, which is why the future road will go to the west. It's too close to the railroad at Front Street to create a safer road at that location. And two, as mentioned earlier, there's no development proposed right now at this point. Vacation request. Any future development will go through the normal process in the city of Talent. So if it's site plan review or a CUP, it'll go through that process and have the opportunity for public input like anything else. But I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Nathan, could I, could I ask you before I address the questions? The, it's, I don't remember exactly what the distance is to the west of the new, new right of way.
I think that's still being worked out with Public Works and will be finalized later, essentially. I, it's, I know it's hundreds of feet, but I don't know exactly where that's at, and that will be a result of the process. And there is the approval for the tentative plat for that partition, and so that will be figured out before it things finalized over there.
Thanks. That, that was it.
Okay.
So, thank you, Mayor. So that, that was the first question. Exactly what is the distance of the movement? It's three to six, couple hundred, couple hundred yards, one hundred and fifty, two hundred, maybe three hundred yards. The, the Boys and Girls Club building that's envisioned is pretty substantial. So it's, it's, anyway, it's, it's several hundred feet to, to the, to the west. And so this, if you don't, don't have this exhibit, I think Nathan was indicating they're expecting it to be about five hundred feet. From where, from the current low, current right of way. So the current right of way is all the way at the eastern edge, right up against the, the subdivision, right? And so the new right of way would be about five hundred feet to the west. And if anybody didn't get a copy of this, we've got some more. And so where the future right of way is indicated with these red and bluish green crosshatches. And the next question was about the distance of the building, and as Nathan mentioned, that, that's going to be a subject of a future, future land use discussion in which the public would have an opportunity to comment. I believe it is envisioned to be a two-story building, but again, that would be a public land use process that could be, that public would have an opportunity to comment. The, another question was whether it's just to service the Boys and Girls Club. It will be, this new right of way will be improved first in order to serve the Boys and Girls Club, but the right of way as a whole is being preserved to allow that full connection that's ultimately envisioned. So it serves multiple purposes in addition to, to serving the Boys and Girl, Girls Club. In terms of why have another entrance into the property at all? It really has to do with good urban design. This is a very large parcel. You wouldn't want to make cars travel too far out of direction. And there are multiple different uses on site. And so I think the city's, part of the city's interest here is having internal circulation would be the term that we would use. So I, I think it's in the city's interest that we're, we're preserving a new right of way. Question about the safety of the intersection, I think Nathan addressed well. That, the, I think the new right of way is beneficial in terms of the way the develop, the development pattern that will take place here for the sake of the school district and Boys and Girls Club. I think from the city's standpoint, the safety of the intersection is significantly improved, and I think we probably would have required this even if it wasn't in the interest of the school district and the Boys and Girls Club, because we wouldn't want that intersection right up against the railroad tracks there. And so that's the safety of the intersection. In terms of the cost, these initial, the, the, the pieces of the roadway that are on this map, the red and blue crosshatching would be at the expense of the school district and their partners. So you'd have to ask the school district in terms of the financing of, of that. In terms of the financing of the longer, the, the, the road itself, that's to be determined. It's not currently, I don't believe, within the fiscally constrained portion of our transportation system plan, which basically means we don't know where the money is going to come from, but we certainly want to preserve the right of way, because in the, in the medium to long-term future, we want to build that road. And so I think, I think, and the final question is, is, is the Boys and Girls Club still planning on relocating there? And my understanding is absolutely yes. And, and I, I should have noted to start with, I appreciate the school district's patience with us. This, I think they, the Boys and Girls Club certainly would have preferred that this process be completed earlier than we are completing it. With some handoffs between city planners and other staff changes, there's been some delay in completing that annexation. But I think we're here now and getting close, and Boys and Girls Club is essentially holding off on truly initiating their capital campaign to have, to have surety about where they're, what, what the site looks like in order to finalize their costs and move ahead with raising the funds to, to build the project. Welcome other questions from council.
Counsel, Penamriff?
Right, I just, I think this is all good. You've explained it well. I'm just looking at page twelve of our packet, and it's essentially moving the, the road that was just right up against the properties away to the west, like you say, but it says two hundred feet, and I thought I heard different distances over the course of the discussion. I just wanted to make sure.
That's what, apologies, and that's one of the things I was referring to that's confusing. So we're, we are required to make clear exactly who we're noticing. This two hundred feet and four hundred feet on exhibit C is who we are required to notice. It doesn't actually have anything to do with the.
Where the road is going to go. Okay, so but it's going to be well away from Front Street, well away from the railroad to create that safety.
Correct.
Sounds great.
Any other questions? Okay. The public hearing on file number DCA. The file number VAC twenty twenty five dash zero zero one is now closed to additional testimony. Council, do you have any other questions that you want to ask staff in response to any of the verbal testimony?
I have a question, Mayor.
Counsel, Colley?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, based out of some of the comments and my own personal curiosity in receiving notices, I know there are applicable laws and rules with what have to go out for notices, but is it possible to put a kind of, I think this did exist, and since I didn't get the notice, I didn't see it, but an intro letter or something to help people understand that, like in this case, this is not a plan where we're about to construct a road. That's something that's a ways away. Just so that, I appreciate people being here and making comments and having concerns, but it seems like a lot of those questions could have potentially been, and concerns been prevented.
I, I, I'm sure there's always the opportunity to, to do better. Make, make things clearer.
I have a couple of comments on that point, but I think I'm going to wait until after the council has deliberated their decision. Are there any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Paramiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty five dash nine nine three dash O by reading in full and then by title.
Second. Can you tell me the page number of the?
Come on, page six.
Thank you.
I said on page four.
It was a four, yeah, it was six.
So we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance two zero two five dash nine nine three dash O by reading in full and then by title. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor. So I will read the, the ordination section. I don't know if that's the right word, but the, the key, the action verbs of the ordinance in full, in order to make sure that we are able to do this vacation as early as possible. Now, therefore, the city of Talent ordains as follows. Section one, on the later of either October third, twenty twenty five, or the next business day after the canastral office of the Oregon Department of Revenue informs the city of Talent with the final steps in certifying the city's true and legal annexation of tax lot thirty eight S one west twenty two D one thousand on complete the entirety of the sixty foot wide Wagner Creek Road right of way in the city of Talent, Jackson County, Oregon, south of Culver Road and terminating at the northern boundary of tax lot thirty eight S one W twenty seven forty one hundred. As more particularly described in the quick claim deed attached here too is exhibit A, shall be vacated and title for said vacated land shall be vested in the owners of tax lot thirty eight S one W twenty two D one thousand, such land bordering the vacated right of way and having been originally dedicated by the owners of said tax lot thirty eight S one W twenty two D one thousand in accordance with ORS two seventy one dot one forty. Section two, the city. Section two, the city hereby preserves a perpetual public utility easement for any existing public utilities located within the vacated area. The easement shall be reserved and granted for the purpose of constructing, reconstructing, operating, maintaining, repair, and upgrading any existing utility facilities within the vacated area. And any use of the vacated area that will interfere with the utility's full use, enjoyment of the easement is hereby prohibited. Section three, the city council adopts its findings, the statements in this ordinance and associated staff report showing that the vacation is in the public interest and conforms in substance and procedure to all applicable local and state statutes. Section four, upon completion of the vacation directed by this ordinance, the city recorder shall file certified copies of this ordinance and a certified plat describing the vacated area in the offices of the Jackson County Clerk and Jackson County Assessor and direct the Jackson County Assessor upon receipt of a certified copy of the plat from the Jackson County Clerk to trace or shade with permanent ink. That portion of the plat vacated by this ordinance ensure that the vacated notation directly references the deed record book and page where the ordinance is recorded as mandated by ORS two seventy-one dot two thirty. Section five, this ordinance shall take effect thirty days after council approval by reading in full and then by title in open session on September third, twenty twenty-five. And the title of the ordinance number twenty twenty-five nine nine three is an ordinance vacating the Wagner Creek Road public right of way immediately east of tax lot thirty-eight S one W twenty-two D one thousand and attaching title of such vacated land to said tax lot in Jackson County.
Okay, so counsel, this is the council's opportunity to deliberate the motion. Counsel Paramiller?
Thank you. Just rather than deliberation, just a little gratitude for staff navigating this complicated process through multiple staffing changes and this process, you know, is going to continue to take a while. And so it's always good to see residents tuning in, coming to speak and sharing their thoughts with us. And also some gratitude to the school district's continued outreach.
Any other comments or? Okay, one more deliberation. Roll call please.
Counselor Paramiller?
Yes.
Counselor Byers? Counselor Prestizo?
Yes.
Counselor Medina? Counselor Penamara?
Yes.
Counselor Coley?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. I just want to make a couple of comments real quick. I, I, I have been following this particular right of way since it started back in the early two thousands as part of the regional problem solving process. And it's always been a very difficult experience for the neighbors in that area. And they've had a lot of really legitimate concerns that have come to us time and time again about this. And, and I think where we could work together to help, to help the neighbor in that area have, I think wherever we can do that, have a deeper understanding of the process that's happening. And before it happens in a way that they can be informed, especially in light of all of the changes that keep happening at the state level about how to process land use. And now so much of it is bypassing the planning commission, at least at one point in time. These matters would come before the planning commission for a recommendation and then come to the council. So they'd have an opportunity to at least hear, you know, the concerns and then bring them to council. Well, that's kind of not happening anymore. And so in whatever way that I can encourage our staff and the staff of the school district to set up some kind of information rising above the, the, the legal bar of, of just notifying people when this stuff is going to come in two weeks at the next meeting with the size of these files and the language that it includes, but doing, doing, going above and beyond to inform this concerned group of people that live there would be appreciated, I know, by that neighborhood based on the history of this project. I know I've talked to you about it as well. And I just, I just feel like they've lived with this for a long, long time. And they've had a lot of mixed information. I, I'd love to see like a, an area on our website where there's, you know, updates to information or just some kind of exceptional way that they can learn. And again, especially in light of the fact that this stuff no longer comes to the planning commission where they can have a information session with everybody else before it even comes to the council. That's now gone. So, I mean, we can have further discussions, but I'm taking advantage of the fact the school district is in the room. And I know Brent, you're, you're one of the good guys. And I, I'm just really asking that we all together, I think the plan is excellent. And I think in the long run, it's so much better than how it started. And I think they'll actually come to appreciate that rather than fight it. So I, it just has to be good. All right. So let's move on to the next item.
We took a five-minute break.
Yeah. So we'll take a five-minute break. So we are now on item number six, city manager and department report.
Thank you, Mayor. I just highlight a couple significant projects that are underway in the city. The final phase of the foundation repairs at Historic Town Hall are underway. And if, unless there is need for discussion or objection from city council, there have been a few historic artifacts found. They are not, they're not archaeological artifacts. They're from the twenties and thirties and city property, a few city records. And my thought is to donate those to the historical society. I did check with George Kramer, our historic architect about both whether there's need to do anything beyond, well, whether there's any need to do anything sort of regulatory wise with that finding. He confirmed that there was not. And did say that he thought donating it to the historic society would be a good step. So just definitely wanted to give the council an opportunity to ask me to bring that before you all more formally or, or, yeah.
Anybody want to see that under the aisle? I'm not saying, thank you for checking.
No, I just think it's a great, it's a great plan. Go for it.
Thanks for checking in.
Great. And staff did submit a grant application to CIS for, to address the roof. And we did include removal of the cedar. And we did touch base with town urban, the cedar that's immediately behind the volunteer cedar that's immediately behind Historic Town Hall. We did touch base with Urban Forestry Committee about that. There are no objections from the committee members. They understood that, that, that building, that building, that tree requires a lot of maintenance to mitigate any potential impacts on the building. And it's potentially a threat to the foundation as well. There, there were some great suggestions from the Urban Forestry Committee about future plantings. And we agreed that it would make sense to come back and be sure that they're included in the sort of envisioned landscape plan for the, for the property as a whole. I'll just mention that we've got two active request processes open right now. The request for proposals for the engineering design of the Gateway Pier Infrastructure Project is open right now. We've got at least four or five engineering firms interested. We hope in proposing on that, we'll be opening bids on September nineteenth. And the city also recently issued a request for qualifications for architectural services for the renovations at forty-nine Talent Ave, the Talent Community Resource Center. I'm going to be meeting again with Rowe Community Health on Friday. They remain very interested in being the city's primary tenant there. And there may be some opportunities for them to contribute to the, to the renovations, whether that's design services or, or other participation. So we can stretch, stretch the budget to make sure that those dollars go as far as they can to improve that building. And finally, I'll just note that the, the Advanced Metering Infrastructure Project is back underway. The, they, those crews were pulled off for a couple of weeks, but post Labor Day, they're back in action in the city. I think we've got about six or seven hundred meters remaining to be replaced out of the total twenty-three, twenty-four hundred connections that we have. So the project's about three quarters or more done. And billing process this, this month went quite, went quite smoothly. So it looks like that side of the project is working well as well. And this is going under the title of the city manager report, but I can't take any credit for it. Our Public Works Director, Gavion Badoa, has been, has been managing that project on behalf of the city. So I think I'll stop there.
Thanks. And thanks for that great report. So I have a question about the Rowe Community Health and forty-nine Towne. So you covered this in your, in your weekly report, which was great. I, I'm still not clear, what I'm looking for some, is a quantification about reaching underserved population. So there was talk about taking patients and continuing the work, but, but I'm still looking for some sort of, you know, quantity that like the, the majority of the folks being served are underserved community, people on Medicaid, for example. Or people who don't have access to, to, you know, a Sante or whatever, other more expensive healthcare. So this is just to, just to make sure that we're meeting what I perceive to be the mission of helping the most vulnerable folks.
So just to check, would, would, so this is going to be a Rowe Community Health clinic. Would a breakdown of Rowe Community Health patients as a whole be, answer your question?
Something like that. That would, that would be fine. I just want to make sure that this is, is really on mission. And I'm sure that it is. I, I don't, I'm not, but I would like to see that quantified, especially in conjunction with merging with the existing medical services there.
Absolutely.
I'm going to ask for a little further clarification on that question. I, I just do want to say though that I do trust that we're going to get a satisfactory answer from this organization, but I want to ask them to provide us with the quantity that you just stated, which is the percentage that they serve and that's their intention to do that or more at this.
I, I would be happy to ask them that question. I, I think their policy is generally that they serve the folks who come to them and they don't turn folks away for need. But I don't think they, I think they also do not turn folks away who happen to have health insurance. So I'm, I, if that's, if that's the council's requirement, I think it may be difficult for them to commit to not serving the folks who approach them and ask the folks who approach them and ask for healthcare.
I think I understand my question to be that if they're serving a percentage of low barrier at at low barrier entry with their business model, but if they maintain that business model, we can expect something along those same lines. I think that's what I'm I'm asking.
Okay.
I don't think you can project the number necessarily, but but that sort of phenomena.
Yeah, I I I hope it wasn't seen as like, you know, oh, you have money, I'm going to turn you away kind of thing. It's 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 it could be, and and again, I'm not really familiar with how the operation works. But it could be that, you know, oh, sorry, we won't have an opening for three months because we're all booked up. And the the, you know, the bookings are with, you know, patients that don't meet those needs. So I think, you know, if they're if they're on mission, if if it truly is, as the mayor says, low barrier, no barrier, that somebody can walk in and and get help, then that certainly that certainly works. So just kind of, I guess, more of a an explanation and basically an assurance that this is this is consistent with our mission.
I got you, and thank you, Mayor, for your clarification. I I did get I I misinterpreted what what you're saying, so thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, so is the Talent Clinic still considering being part of this merging?
So not as an organization. The individuals who run the Talent Clinic are discussing with Rogue Community Health being the primary providers at a Rogue Community Health Clinic in Talent. And I think there's an expectation and a hope that a lot of their existing clients will be interested in in being served there. And then Rogue Community Health will be adding additional providers and growing and growing that practice. And it will enable, I think, well, I don't think, I know that part of the reason that the folks who are operating the Rogue Clinic or sorry, Talent Clinic are excited about being there is it's going to expand their ability to to serve lowering, you know, people with without health insurance.
And that's what they do now, right?
I I know they accept Medicaid and Medicare. I don't know that they're able to serve folks with no no insurance.
And I guess our primary care physicians have been to Talent Clinic for a long time now. And I don't want them to go somewhere and us not be able to see them anymore because we have insurance.
Yeah, I I didn't interpret, well, I did, I think incorrectly interpret the the mayor and the mayor's question. But at this point, just to be clear, maybe to restate it so we're all on the same page. My understanding is you all want me to check with Rogue Community Health about the overall profile of their, the population that they serve and to receive assurance from them that they are going to be, they're going to be operating on the same standard at this clinic that they operate elsewhere. And and that their their intention and plan is to have the capacity to be able to serve the folks who come in and and need need care.
I have a concern I want to voice with all due respect, my respected always here. I the concern I have after hearing all of this is that Talent Clinic is one of the few clinics in town. And and I'm imagining that people choose it, insurance or not, hopefully, a good amount of insurance is because it is the only thing in town. The the option will be to take your insurance to Ashland or Metro. So convenience is probably one of the main reasons. So that's now does make me a little concerned about the mix of patients. And and if we're moving a large mix of patients, I'm not projecting, I don't know the answer. But if we're moving a large mix of patients that would interfere with what would be the normal practice with Rogue Community Health, I would I would I would be challenged by that notion. And so if the intention is, and I do understand, because I know the players that are involved, I do understand, you know, the and we should probably have this conversation maybe after your Friday meeting to be fair so that they can be present. But but the the people that go to Talent Clinic may not be the same mission that Rogue Community Health has. And bringing those two together could cause a different, a different outcome. And so I think that that's important to consider.
Well, I also think that, I think, not if not in contrast to you, but I think there's two, maybe three now, divisions at Talent Clinic. If they join with this other group and they bring in three more divisions, it seems like, you know, the clients that may go with the current Talent Clinic over there, they're not going to overwhelm the system with all the people they already have. There'll be a lot more opportunity for people of talent to go to that clinic because there's more doctors to see. If there's a shortage of doctors in the town, it's hard to get into doctors everywhere, anytime of the year, even if the talent clinic may.
I don't disagree with that. And but I don't think that was the mission of that building. And so they they could do the same thing at any other building. They could stay where they are and still accomplish that. So I I I think it's worth asking and analyzing and and getting back to the council about what we can expect there. If I didn't, I didn't realize they would be taking their caseload from the Talent Clinic over to Rogue Community Health. And that's a definitely different proposition. And it might be that the answer is that it's going to be the same, and they have a lot of low barrier there, and and it'll all be just fine. That would be, that's the welcome answer.
Good. I I so just to try to restate it one more time. I think what council would and and the city would be satisfied with is a situation where the current, the we're talking about not a merger of organizations, but we're talking about the individuals who are running the Talent Clinic going to work for Rogue Community Health. Rogue Community Health operating clinic that's going to be substantially larger than the Talent Clinic and be able to serve a wider range of clientele than the than the Talent Clinic. I guess I'll stop there and then I'd like to add, I guess, a comment from my healthcare experience, which is, I think that these FQHCs, the they struggle to make ends meet. And I think actually having more organizations where folks with health insurance are being served by these by clinics who are serving everybody is a good model. It's financially better for them. It creates less of a two-tiered system, creates places where, you know, clients who have health health insurance and don't have health insurance are both comfortable. So I'm not, I guess, to me, it's a very fuzzy line of where your all concern kicks in. And that may just be the reality of it, that it is a fuzzy line, but or maybe there's a clear line that you all could describe. Or maybe we just want to wait and and see how they describe it further.
Can I make a comment?
Of course.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think this is an important process, get this worked out.
Yeah.
I agree with what you just said about what makes it sustainable for some of these clinics is to take the insurance. And and that's what concerns me about Talent Clinic. That's not the mission of Rogue Community Health. And the fact that these two are going to merge may disproportionately favor paying insurance. And they can do that anywhere. And and so we have an opportunity for, yeah, we have an opportunity that we that we've outlined what the purpose is. And and it's about low, low barrier entry. And so just really not wanting to solve their problems with with a solution that we have for a different population is what what I'm trying to get at. And I don't think Rogue Community Health has those same concerns as Talent Clinic in terms of like having to, with the size of their organization and the fundraising that they do and all and the grants that they get. It's a different business model. And and it does provide for more, more ability to take low barrier patients and not needing to rely on insurance patients. As I understand it, I could be wrong, but that's how I understand it. And so for a small clinic, I just I just would like to know what what impact it will have on the on the model that we that we envision for low barrier entry, what impact will it have to bring the caseload from Talent Clinic over to that organization? Again, it might, so I agree with what you're saying, but I think it's a challenge for smaller clinics than it is for Rogue Community Health. And I think it'll change the mix if 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 that is the case for the smaller clinic, that they are predominantly supported by by insurance, people who can get medical care anywhere. I I would hate for that to be the preference then as an operating model.
So just to be clear, I there's, I can tell you definitively today, there there there's not going to be a, it's going to be a Rogue Community Health clinic. It is going to be operated as a Rogue Community Health clinic on their principles. I think I think your, I think your suspicion or concern that at least initially, they may have a mix of patients that is more has more ability to pay than across their clinics as a whole is probably right. But and it is going to expand access in our community for those folks who don't have the ability to pay. But.
Yeah, I'm following all of this. I I think that I think the what we're envisioning really depends on the numbers. So when we say a mix, it could be a ninety-ten mix, it could be a ten-ninety mix, it could be a fifty-fifty mix. So if we understand better what the capacity, the projected capacity of the the merged medical clinic is and the number and what the impact of the the patients, if the entire patient load or seventy percent or whatever the projection is, comes over and stays with. If we understand what that mix is quantitatively, I think that'll allay a lot of fears.
Yeah. And and by that, you don't know, yeah, that would be a day, would be a perfectly acceptable one. It would be nice to have.
Yeah, yeah, I just want to make sure that I'm asking asking the right questions so we get the answer that we all need.
I'm trying to be diplomatic, you know, so we could say the wrong thing when you're trying to get across, but we didn't.
One of the patients is sitting right there.
Yeah. But if we did make a community investment of this size for folks who have great cars and great insurance and go to go three miles up the road and get perfect or good medical care in in lieu of somebody who doesn't have access and who doesn't have a good car and who needs to walk to the doctor in town. And so I think that's 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 what the foundation of my concerns. Yeah.
I I guess the the other thing I would mention is that of private clinics right there is a range and many don't accept Medicaid and Medicare patients in the clinic, Talent Clinic, as I understand it does. So they're already more of a middle-of-the-road provider to begin with. And I think, I think, I think Dave's numbers are, my understanding, pretty much similar. They're talking about sort of twice the size of operation. But I think I think that's probably may maybe a very simple way to ask, answer your question. How many additional providers are they thinking about basing?
I don't think that's the answer I'm looking for.
Well, I also might be curious to find out what percentage of the current Talent Clinic may take that, you know, make whatever these criteria, you don't have insurance.
That's the answer.
Yeah. Because then we know what's they're starting off at and then extrapolate to what it might be as it develops.
I actually feel pretty hopeful about about the answer this point that I had. Counselor Coley?
Yeah, just to say I I agree and have the same question that you all have. And I'm curious to find more information about like Alex is having meetings soon. Just to answer one question that Counselor Penamara asked based off Rogue Community Health's 2024 report of their total patients that they serve across the Rogue Valley, seventy-five percent are publicly insured, twenty percent are privately insured, and five percent are uninsured.
Let's let's break that up. Thank you. Okay. Anything else for department reports?
No, thank you.
And thanks for answering our question.
No, thank you for clarifying. Yeah.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is it's the consent calendar. And just again, for the record, we've removed seven point three, which is council meeting minutes of July sixteenth for some correction. Then we have the removal of seven point seven, seven twenty, seven point nine, which are tour meeting minutes, which will go to the tour meeting. Is there any other item that the council would like to take up for discussion? Seeing none, all entertain a motion. Counselor Coley?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Perry Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Counselor Pesezo?
Yes.
Counselor Medina?
Counselor Penamara?
Yes.
Counselor Coley?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number eight point one is the second reading of ordinance twenty-two-five-nine-nine-o, the group development code in the staff report.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I you all have, this is a second reading only of of an ordinance that you all passed at the last meeting, implementing several of the recommendations from the court, the quarter re-envisioning project, including establishing design standards for Highway ninety-nine. And I think in the interest of time, I'll I'll see if there are any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, all entertain a big motion. And Counselor Perry Miller?
I move to adopt by a second reading by title only, ordinance twenty-two-five-nine-eight-nine-o, an ordinance amending Talent Municipal Code Title eighteen. Am I supposed to be reading this, Alex? As part of the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the that is the full title.
Okay, I'm going to keep going. A code Title eighteen, Talent Zoning Code, including chapters eighteen point one-five, definitions, eighteen point five-five, commercial zone, highway, central business district, eighteen point six-zero, commercial zone, highway, eighteen point eight-five, overlay zone, natural areas, parks and floodplains, eighteen point nine-five, residential lot improvement standards, and eighteen point one-one-five, development and design standards, and making findings in support of those amendments. I'm on page sixty, if that's helpful.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second to adopt by a second reading by total only ordinance point five-nine-eight-nine-o, an ordinance amending Talent Municipal Code Title eighteen, Talent Zoning Code, including chapters eighteen point fifteen, definitions, eighteen point five-five, commercial zone, highway, central business district, eighteen point six-zero, commercial zone, highway, eighteen point eight-five, overlay zone, natural areas, parks and floodplains, eighteen point nine-five, residential lot improvement standards, and eighteen point one-one-five, development and design standards, and making findings in support of those amendments. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Perry Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Counselor Pesezo?
Yes.
Counselor Medina? Counselor Penamara?
Yes.
Counselor Coley?
Yes.
Yes.
Eight point two is second reading ordinance twenty twenty five dash nine nine one dash O. To update I T E manual edition and approval resolution twenty twenty five dash one two six dash R to update system development charges for employment staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Um the first item here is a second reading of an ordinance. Uh allowing the city to use the most current. Uh e- edition of the Institute for Transportation Engineers manual when calculating system develop, transportation system development charges.
Any question?
I had a question.
Councillor Perry Miller?
Thank you. Um I was just wondering, Alex, if there's a reason to uh include the specific addition or if it's. Better to just say the most current edition. I'm just thinking about like. Robert's rules rather than, you know, saying which edition. Sometimes it's better to just say the most current, but I know that there's also strategic reasons to not do that in some cases.
Yeah, I think I think that's a similar question to ask the our city attorney. I I believe the answer is we're. It's uh preferable to to name, name a source whenever possible rather than to uh name a uh an item to be filled in later.
Thanks.
Particularly, particular, excuse me, particularly. With regard to SDCs.
Also assuming it doesn't change that often. So hopefully the eleventh edition will be around for a while.
Hopefully it's new. Okay, uh if there's no further questions, I'll entertain a motion. Councillor Colley?
I move to adopt by a second reading ordinance number twenty twenty five dash nine nine one dash O. By title only amending title thirteen public utilities and services, chapter thirteen point four zero methodology for transportation SDC. Use the current edition of the Institute for Transportation Engineers manual.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to add up by a second reading only ordinance number twenty twenty five dash nine nine one dash O by title only amending title fourteen public utilities and services, chapter thirteen point four zero methodology transportation. SDC to use the transition of the Institute for Transportation Engineers mo- uh manual. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Councillor Paramiller?
Yes.
Councillor Byers? Councillor Pesezo?
Yes.
Councillor Medina? Councillor Penamara?
Yes.
Councillor Colley?
Yes.
Uh motion carried. Item number eight point three is second reading ordinance twenty twenty five dash nine nine two dash O for like joint development fees and charges to be activated by relevant staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Um and I'll just note for the record that item eight point two. The the title of the action on the agenda, the agenda got brought, uh agenda item got brought over incorrectly that. Second part, that approval of resolution twenty twenty five one two five R took place at the last meeting and it was part of the same discussion. But um.
Do we need to go that uh go do that one over then?
No, I don't. I don't believe so. I think just uh ma- making sure clear that uh the the agenda had an additional item on it that was not needed to be tackled. The uh. The next item is. I have some concern because we have a difference in the. Ordinance number between the uh staff report and what is on the agenda. And I'm reasonably confident that staff report is correct, but um I think maybe I should ask you all to put it off to the next meeting. Um so we can make sure that we've got all our eyes.
Oh, do we need a motion for that?
I I think the city attorney is indicating no.
We're gonna strike eight point three to the next meeting. Um. Next item on the agenda is nine point one, point the city manager attempt to negotiate occasional bargaining matters staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Um. I believe the the city practice uh in the past has only been to uh appoint a formal representative for negotiating bargaining. Uh when it's time to update the uh the collective bargaining agreement or agreements. Um but uh there are items that come up from time to time outside of those uh more formal bargaining sessions. Um and uh so I'm I'm requesting that council authorize me to. Uh discuss those items that may come up from time to time outside of uh the collective bargaining agreement. Uh negotiation or renegotiation.
I just have one question. So when you say outside of those C D A bargaining windows occasionally I've done before our negotiations, this, these would be items that are still bound. By the charter for pro temp. So in other words, we'd be authorizing you for with reevens of discipline membership in the collective bargaining unit. And. Uh but but we're not. There is no um. Let's see. I I'm hung, I'm hung up on membership in the collective bargaining unit um because I I I feel like that's substantive change. And uh to the organization and. Um and I think the charter, the spirit of the charter is that pro temp doesn't make substantive changes to the organization. And um so. Maybe I need some clarification on what it means, membership in the collective bargaining unit. Let me get my question answered and then I'll take you to the bottom.
Sure, so uh the distinction that I was trying to draw here would be between. Items that um require an amendment to the collective bargaining agreement or items that uh are sort of that come up. And that are envisioned for discussion uh un- under the the collective bargaining agreement that is operating. The question that I think you're asking is if I'm requesting any uh abilities above and beyond what the pro. The city manager pro temp is allowed to do under the bylaws. And my answer to that would be no, that you to uh not requesting that and you wouldn't have the ability to do that by just passing a motion.
And can you tell me what?
Thank you.
Yeah, a follow up question on that is what? Uh what are the? Types of things that are bargained are that are approved by amendment? Is that what you said or does that require an amendment?
So uh I mean, any change to the collective bargaining agreement? So the the things that. Are coming up that I'm experiencing, I think it's easier for me to describe the things that have been coming up. Uh than necessarily the things that. Don't. Um I mean, the pay rates, the uh work conditions, I mean. There are lots of things there are black and white in the collective bargaining agreement. Um the things that have been coming up, um a good example are are grievances. Um and so there, those come down to a matter of an interpretation of the collective bargaining agreement or an interpretation of. Of labor laws and whether the cities, you know, correctly applying them to uh to covered employees. Another example would be um. We had um the collective bargaining agreement did not say anything explicit in here about the use of security cameras. And so the city um had added a number of security cameras and the. Uh the union asked to have some formal uh discussion about where those cameras were and how those cameras should be used.
So membership in the collective bargaining union unit is not determined by amendments to the agreement?
No, the way the, well, it could be. Um but there are um, there are. The the way I read, where the way I read the collective bargaining agreement is it um in terms of the membership. And it actually does have an exhibit of the members of the union. But it's um, it's, I believe, sort of a snapshot in time. It is who the members of the bargaining unit are at the time that it's adopted. So there could be uh. Uh positions or individuals that aren't in the unit at the time you adopt that collective bargaining agreement that could move in or out of the. Unit without an amendment to the bargaining agreements.
And is that a fact? Is that the legal practice? Does anybody know that? Okay, um did you have a council penamara? Did you have a question?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Oh, my microphone's so loud. Yeah, so um so just reading the motion, it talks about. Uh issues that arise outside of formal negotiations on renewal of establishment. Of collective bargaining agreements. To me, that's that's the once every couple of years um kind of thing. Um I I was um, this is more of a comment than a question. I um and this is nothing about you, Alex. This is about the the spirit of the pro temp position and the prohibition against organizational change without bringing in uh the council and all of that. Um so I think that I could support a motion similar to this. I'd be looking, but I'd be looking for some more guardrails around particularly the pro temp position. And again, nothing personal, but moving forward. Um and one of the things I was thinking about is like in, you know, the in um consultation with human resources. For example, if that would be useful or in consultation with the council or with the mayor or just some some sort of kind guardrails that um. That would basically limit the ability of that position to um, you know, take these kinds of actions, uh you know what?
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm just curious to get a fuller understanding of what we're talking about. If. We don't pass this motion, how do these things that you just brought up get handled now or how would they get handled?
A- as I said, I don't believe the city's taken this action in the past. And so I don't think this has ever been discussed. And my predecessor regularly engaged in these kinds of discussions. And so I continued that practice. So.
So you're, so you're really trying to just create some formal vehicle for doing what you've kind of been doing anyway?
Yes, and and part of the motivation um for this request. Was to make really clear that we could have an executive, that you all could discuss some issues with me in executive session. Because the executive session rules explicitly state a purpose of executive sessions to discuss bargaining matters with an appointed representative.
Your predecessor was not pro temp. And uh so I think, and I don't um I don't. Um I don't recall us having this this. It could be that it was never reported to us, but I don't recall us ever being faced with this um concern. I'm sorry, councillor Penamara, I think I may have.
Oh, no, that's okay. I I was just gonna, I was just gonna cut to the chase. I I could support this if um. And and I understand that that this clarifies your ability to meet with us in executive session, which I certainly want to support. But during your meeting with us in executive session, you are in consultation with the council. So I'm wondering if we could add some verbiage. And I don't know that we need to have the city, city manager has these uh. Abilities. It's just the question of acting or pro temp or that kind of situation again with the spirit of the charter. Um just to add some verbiage that could be in consultation with council. Um and that would, that would satisfy me. Um. So just, just to not to uh, cause this is more than just sitting in an executive session. This is giving a lot more power than that, the way I read. The way I read the motion. So I'd I'd be asking our city attorney. I mean, I'm fine with you s- be participating this evening, but I'd be ask our city attorney to put some language around there that um that uh. Doesn't allow, you know, uh some guardrails around independent action. So like in consultation with council. Would would probably satisfy me.
Just my my card, my if if um I I believe the charter does allow pro temp to be able to discipline. Um where I come up with on the membership and collective bargaining, I don't think that's clear. And I would not want that being conflict with the charter or even the spirit of the charter. Um so I think if. If it doesn't offend uh your your seat and that I I can understand where where mine. Um I would just be putting in that language that councillor Penamara. Is suggesting for the purpose of not making any organizational changes that we saw of the of the council and. But um if I I would say I'm not. I think the the charter is clear that you can handle agreements as the new can handle, it doesn't prohibit you from handling. Uh it doesn't prohibit a pro temp handling disciplinary action. I don't even think that 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 number even needs to be in there, but. Anyway, I support what the um. This councillor Penamara is is suggesting, but it would be for the purpose of. Not understanding. Clearly would be whole amendments to the agreements would entail or uh for the purpose of not. Um conflicting with the with the charter under um. Under some qualifications that person has.
May I make the suggestion? I mean, a- as I said, I I don't believe this motion. Could provide anybody any additional authority that's not allowed under the charter. But it, would it be sufficient to simply state that? This motion does not provide addition, any additional authority that's not allowed by the charter. Uh I'm. Would that satisfy?
Well, I mean, then there were actually. You know, the the whole membership question could be covered under this. And then it becomes kind of like, well, if it's changing the membership and organizational change or not, we get all into that. So I'm 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 asking for, I think, a narrower motion. Just basically um. Adding in consultation with the council. On. I I don't want to, I don't want to like, I I'm sorry, I guess what what I'm saying is there's, there's a lot of inferences and kind of um. Unsettled questions and. Saying, you know, just not the charter that kind of assumes that we all agree on all of that. And and maybe we don't. It's not, it's not necessarily specific. This to me is very specific and and grants a lot of um more authority than I'd be comfortable with for that that position. So, well, I think, you know, what you're trying to accomplish is perfectly within the realms. I'm objecting to the language in the motion.
And I guess the the challenge and what I was trying to do was write a motion that would. Serve the city. In the future, regardless of the individual circumstances. But I don't think you would want a motion that requires the city manager to to consult with council on any grievance that they're discussing. With the with the union. So perhaps, sorry, I guess my my suggestion would be perhaps a motion to um. Designate the city manager pro temp to negotiate. Well. I guess the other, the other thing is negotiate like uh negotiate is not decide. Uh a- anything the city council needs to sign off on. Like I, the city council needs to sign off on. But um but for the sake of moving us forward, maybe uh just a motion is to designate the city manager pro temp to negotiate. With um. For with. Um. I lost. So city manager pro temp. Um strike the city, uh the city manager to negotiate uh on behalf of the city with representatives in the city's collective. Uh bargaining units on issues that arise um outside of formal negotiations. Uh with the understanding that any decisions. That require that would need council input. Are brought to council. Hey, um. I I'm I'm, I guess, I'm sure I want to correct the issue that I don't really see this the lot.
I'm wondering if, I'm just, sorry, I'm just wondering if Dave has, you've been writing, Dave, I'm wondering if you, if you're getting where I'm coming from, if you have a suggestion?
I.
I, I, a couple of your phrases I didn't get, couldn't hear, but I think of, um, and as a preference, I just, uh, I want to note that labor law being in Oregon is uh, you, you have to be careful though, be- because entering into negotiations um, uh, can very quickly be eaten to be, well, reaching an, an agreement with a person who, uh, has the appearance of being um, a decision maker. Um, in other words, you, you can say, yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm not agreeing to that yet. Um, but you, if you start to get very far beyond that, even though you might, as a, as a city manager or doing the negotiations, even though you might be thinking in your head, I need to bring this back to the council, if you've got apparent authority um, and you're negotiating, the union could take that as an actual, um, a- agreement if you are pretty close. So you gotta be very careful, you know, that's, that's, when I say that, reference. I, I just wonder if you said something like, um, in your motion. Designate city manager, blah, 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 to negotiate on behalf of, of the city with representatives of the city's collective bargaining and some issues that arise outside of formal negotiations uh, on renewal or establishment of collective bargaining agreements, other than changes in, um, in the organization or in membership. Uh, in other words, you'd want to be, which I, what I think you're trying to do is, is be careful that you don't end up inadvertently taking a stand that will be deemed by the union to be, um, consensus on the part of the city with a pro tem city manager. Where you end up with a, a change in the organization that, uh, that the charter is saying, we don't, we don't want a pro tem manager to make changes in the organization that are going to last in, into the future beyond that pro tem status.
So I heard you say CAD language says other than changes in organization or membership.
Right. Well, I'm not sure that captures what Alex is trying to accomplish either. Cause he's wanting to make sure that, um, that he, he can be the negotiator with the, with the, uh, with the union on other matters. So.
So what would be the point of having city manager and acting city manager without language? Why not just say city pro tem?
Yeah, yeah.
It's just to not have to have this discussion with, yeah, I, that's the only reason I wrote.
Well, I, I kind of do. I, I agree with you. I don't think we need city manager in here. It's really about the pro tem position. I'm not sure about acting city manager, if that's even a thing for us. Um, and, and Dave, I really liked your suggestion, um, about, but it's kind of, it's like, uh, this, the, the pro tem position can do all the things that we're not naming, except for these things that we're naming. And I'm wondering if, if my concern is, because I can't, I don't know all of the things. If I want to interpret this narrowly for the pro tem position, um, is to list the things that the pro tem can do, you know, address grievances, you know, negotiate in these. If there's a, a more affirmative way. And, and, and my question just really to, for tonight, because it is getting late, is that, um, I, I don't know of anything that could, that would prevent, um, our pro tem from participating in the executive session tonight. And if that's the case, can we just? Cause this is a lot. To me, this is a lot. Um, can we just take, push, push this out? And still go on with our executive session tonight with our, with Alex's participation?
I don't, I don't, the answer is yes. I don't see why, why you couldn't participate, whether you made a decision on this or not.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to.
Well, yeah, uh, Alex is right. The, the statute that allows for an executive session says it's, you can do it under this provision. The council, uh, is meeting with the, uh, to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the government rather than carry on labor negotiations. So he's trying to make sure by having you pass something now that I could qualify to have the executive session tonight.
I, I think the, the impact of you all not passing this motion is that I couldn't discuss these things with you all in an executive session.
Well, so, e- executive session, we can invite whoever we want. That's not a thing. I think you're saying we couldn't have the executive session. Would, does Dave count as somebody who can, do you take part in negotiations at all as our city attorney?
I have not in the past, um, and.
But could you be considered?
Well, am I?
Are, are you planning to cut out of here before the exam?
Could be, uh, but I'm not, I'm, I'm not designated so far to be carrying on labor negotiations.
I think we can get there with the language that Dave was suggesting.
Okay.
Um, and, um, and I, and I don't think that we need to have the city manager um, because the charter does clearly.
Yes.
And, um, so.
May I offer a friendly amendment?
Sure.
Um, so to, I, I would say, um, this, um, without the authority, uh, to make changes in the organizational structure or membership in the bargaining unit without city council concurrence.
Government construction uh, or membership, membership what?
Without the authority to make changes in the organizational structure or membership in the bargaining unit without city council concurrence.
Anybody want to take a stab at it?
Um, I will if you read it again, Alex. Oh, you got it?
Without the authority, without the authority to make changes in the organizational structure or membership to bargaining unit without.
Without the authority.
Without city council concurrence.
Okay. I'm gonna try. Uh, I moved to designate the city manager pro tem. Do we need acting city manager in there too? No? Okay. I moved to designate the city manager pro tem to negotiate on behalf of the city with representatives of the city's bargaining, collective bargaining units on issues that arise outside of formal negotiations on renewal or establishment of collective bargaining units. Um, with the understanding that decisions without the authority, sorry, without the authority of making changes in the organizations or the membership of the bargaining unit without council, uh, city council concurrence. But was that what you said, Alex?
I, it works.
Yeah, second. We have a motion and a second to designate city manager pro tem to negotiate on behalf of the city with representatives of the city's collective bargaining units on issues that arise outside of formal negotiations on the renewal or establishment of collective bargaining agreements without the authority uh, to make changes in organizational structure or, and membership to bargaining unit without city council concurrence. Was there any further expansion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Perry Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Byers? Counselor Piscisa?
Yes.
Counselor Medina? Counselor Fenomera?
Yes.
Counselor Cole?
Yes.
Okay, item number eight point
nine.
Uh, nine point three, uh, which will be nine point two now. Let the record show that discussion of potential for use of urban rental, uh, urban reserve area TA four for affordable housing is now item nine point two. You moved nine point two. You didn't strike it, right?
Uh, we actually, we struck, we struck.
Okay. Um, so yes, uh, what I said, what I just said is correct.
Absolutely.
Uh, so, Sapperford?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, members of the council. Um, the Housing Authority of Jackson County is, uh, very much interested and committed to building more affordable housing in, uh, in and around the city of town. Uh, particularly in recognition of, um, the impact of the Almeida fire here. Um, there is a, the area of TA four in particular uh, may be a, a site of opportunity, uh, for, for the Housing Authority. Um, but it's got, uh, a rather complicated, uh, and unique, uh, land use um, limitations on it. Um, so, uh, I'll try not to get too far into the weeds, but essentially regional problem solving, uh, says that you must have uh, or only allows industrial uses there. There's a Senate bill that, that, uh, postdates regional problem solving that says where you have zoning, uh, that allows industrial uses, the city must allow affordable housing. Um, DLCD actually, our local regional DLCD representative, uh, suggested that um, being aware of the Housing Authority's desire and the limited number of, uh, options for them uh, made the suggestion to Housing Authority staff and city staff that this might be an avenue to, um, to, uh, to allow the production of affordable housing in TA, TA four. Um, so, uh, Ryan, uh, is here from, uh, Housing Authority of Jackson County. Thank you for joining us. Um, and, uh, so I wanted to just do an initial, uh, touch base with, uh, the council. If you, you're, uh, generally in support of, of exploring that possibility. Um, and, uh, and secondarily, uh, should we be pursuing, uh, grant funds to, to support that process? And as a caveat to that last question, I will add that I discussed with the Housing Authority today the possibility of the Housing Authority actually being the app, an applicant. Um, therefore having more direct control over the process, better insight, um, and understanding of exactly uh, whether they're on the path to success or not. Um, and also, um, they, they, uh, have some resources particularly for fire recovery. Um, the final thing I think I should add that, that Ryan and Jason Elzy, the, the director, uh, mentioned today is they're really committed to, um, to, uh, projects in this area, potentially even on the site. Even if they don't necessarily meet this land use timeline, um, and want you all to know that. Um, but, and, um, still are interested in understanding if the city, uh, would be interested in exploring this timeline if we could do it in such a way that works for the Housing Authority and the specific funding, uh, that they have right now out of fire recovery funds. So, um, I should stop there and see if I can clarify anything or, uh, make things muddier.
Are you gonna invite Jason, uh, Ryan up so I can say hi? It's been a forever.
Sure, I didn't want to be late. Uh, but yeah, hi, uh, Brian Haynes, I'm the Director of Real Estate Development for Housing Authority of Jackson County. Uh, I've been in that position for about eight years now. Um, and, uh, talent is, is a community that, uh, was identified with me my first day that we need to try to find ways to develop, uh, some housing in. Uh, we haven't yet, since I, I've been there. Um, we just haven't found the right parcel, the right site, uh, the right piece of dirt. Um, and so this is an opportunity, uh, that we could potentially explore, uh, i- in the future. And I'm happy to answer, ask any, or answer any questions. Yeah.
Uh, no, I just want to say, um, the last time I think I saw you got a tour, many of us got a tour of Snowberry down in Ashland and and the mayor and I did a tour of some of your housing and just really, really impressed. And I get meetings with Carol a lot, so.
Okay, great.
So, no, I just, just, I'm just a big fan of the work and, um, for, for, and the houses are beautiful. Um, and I'm also seeing you're doing the work at Royal Oaks.
Yes.
On ninety-nine and all that stuff.
Forty units right now that are, uh, ready. We have certificate of occupancy on. We're moving people in right now.
Yeah.
I've got another forty units sitting on foundations. Uh, we, and we have to tie them into the, the infrastructure. Uh, and those will be ready for move in before Christmas. And then the last thirty-eight units in that park, uh, it's gonna depend on the weather over the past, because they're manufacturing clamath balls. Uh, but we anticipate, uh, those will be ready in the spring.
That's great. I'm, I just want to say, I, you know, I'm, I'm a fan and I, uh, I'd be thrilled to see. I think TF, TF four is a great opportunity. I want to thank Alex for, um, figuring this out. And Mayor, I think you suggested this a while back. Um, uh, I think it's a great opportunity. I'm, I would be very excited and very supportive of it. And, and unlike the gateway, we don't have to figure that much out, right? It's, it's a, they do all the work. They do, you guys do all the work.
There's a lot to figure.
Seeing your work and it's great work, so, so, yeah.
Yeah, my hat is all to be, that you're doing it for. It's, uh, uh, it's very different model than anything you've done before. And to be able to pivot that way and, and help with that, uh, help with that, uh, development is truly extraordinary. Um, so with that though, um, we're not talking about that kind of how G four, G four. Can you tell us a little bit about, just how you're all conceptual, what that might look like?
I, I think probably the, uh, the model that we would be most likely to develop, uh, something on that parcel. Uh, if, if you're familiar with our, our two most recent developments, uh, that came online about a year ago. Uh, I think it was October last year in Medford. One is called, uh, Orchard Meadows and the other is called Prescott Garden. So one is by South Medford High School, another one's by North Medford High School. And it is, uh, two and three story buildings, uh, uh, combination. Uh, they're all actually flats. Uh, sometimes we do townhomes as well, just depending on, uh, site constraints. Uh, but those, those are all flats. Um, and, uh, it incorporates our new architectural design, uh, which is a little bit more contemporary, uh, than we've done in the past. Um, it, one of the concerns that I had is, uh, people knew immediately it was a Housing Authority development because we had been using the same architectural design for about the last fifteen, eighteen years. And, uh, so we use the same interior building footprints on, on those, but we put a new uh, facade, uh, on it essentially. We, we know that those, that units, the way they're designed, uh, on the interior, the tenants, uh, they like, and so we didn't want to, you know, reinvent the wheel on something like that. But I wanted a, a more contemporary exterior design. So those are the first two, uh, actually, we did do one in Grants Pass, uh, with that design as well ahead of then. Uh, so those were the second and third, but they came on the line at the same time. So that would be the, kind of the model that I would anticipate doing something on. Um, and based on the way the funding works, we would probably be looking to develop Buy Bakers, uh, initially, um, which could be anywhere between, let's call it sixty, sixty-five units. Ball, I'm just ball, spitballing here. Um, and then the re- the remainder of the land, uh, the funding would not be available for that initially. Um, and I, I don't know when that would be available, but I think that the first phase of that would probably be sixty-five, seventy units-ish.
Yeah, I think, you know, uh, so for the purpose of just making sure that misinformation doesn't hit the streets tomorrow morning.
Right.
Uh, one of the things that we all need to understand is that light industrial land can be used for the purpose of affordable housing according to state law. So without that, it's the right light industrial land. And, um, and, and the, the LP has made it really clear in this so far. And I don't think changed their mind, but so far in this process, that they have no intentions of letting us change that land from light industrial to housing, uh, or any, any other kind of housing projects. That's the way the
Sure.
Reserve project work. Um, so our, it, it does seem uh, like an interesting prospect, pursue, um, if we, if we're gonna get housing on that side of town um, to utilize this, this legislative. this legislative tool, uh, as opposed to ignoring it. And then we might with, uh, blank industrial land out there for, we still have a surplus of industrial land in our community that's, uh, it's not a surplus, but industrial land is still not developed.
Sure.
Um, I think that's, uh, an important, important thing for us all to bear in mind is we decide whether or not to, to ask staff to be able to explore this. Councilor Penomaroff?
Right, I think you're referring to Senate Bill eight.
I think it's Senate Bill one.
It's Senate Bill eight, yes.
Yeah. Um, the other thing I wanted to find out more about is, you know, the cool partnerships that you've done. I think you, one of them was with Maslow Project.
Yes, yes, uh, so we do have a partnership with the Maslow Project. And typically when we're putting a new, uh, development in, uh, we set aside a, a number of units, uh, for, for them, uh, and, and for their clients. Um, and, you know, they, they've got first shot at them, uh, and we'll hold them open for a certain amount of time. And if they don't have enough, uh, clients that are necessarily ready, uh, for housing yet, then it gets opened to kind of the general pool. But we do generally have been for, I wanna say the last four or five years, maybe even longer than that, six years, uh, we have been working very closely with the Maslow Project and housing, uh, their clients in our developments.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So what does staff need from us tonight?
Um, uh, just to sense, if the, the majority of the council is on the same page as, uh, the mayor and Councilor Penomaroff, and then, um,
thumbs up.
assuming that you are, um, uh, may I also assume that you want staff to pursue resources to, to support the, the groundwork to, to pursue, potentially pursue that land use?
Can you describe that just a little bit?
Yeah, there's a, there's actually a, a technical assistance round that's open for application or is about to open for application from DLCD right now. Um, the, 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 because of the light industrial designation, um, the key foundational document that we would need to update is actually our Economic Opportunity Analysis, the industrial land piece of it. Um, those, um, those are priority projects for this round of technical assistance. So, um, that's the specific opportunity that I'm thinking about pursuing.
Uh, so everybody understands what, uh, yeah, okay, is there any objections to that? All right, I, I'll take that as consent.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
You, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
Yeah. Say hi to Jason.
Hello.
Appreciate the work you guys do. May Ryan come from the bottom, but it's you.
Yeah.
Uh, all right, uh, so the next item on the agenda is item nine point three, and that'll be the Workman's Comp item. So, uh, let the record show that I'm, uh, actually changing the number to nine point three for the Workman's Comp item. I'm sorry Hector, I'm taking you down, making you, making you work hard tonight. Yeah, so it's nine point three.
Over.
Okay. Uh, Workman's Comp, that?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um, annually, um, SAFE, uh, SAFE Corporation, which is, uh, the, uh, quasi-public, uh, provider of workmen's, workers' compensation insurance in Oregon. Um, uh, under our policy, we can cover some city volunteers. Um, if we want, uh, some city volunteers covered under that wo- workers' comp policy, we need a resolution, uh, naming them. So I'm asking you to name, uh, city council, members of the planning commission, and police department volunteers as eligible for, uh, workers' compensation, um, in the, uh, uh, resolution number twenty-two-five-one-twenty-eight.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Sorry, I have a question.
Yeah, at the bottom of the top page.
A question.
Yeah, Councilor Summer.
Um, so these, these volunteers that were, is this, is this gonna affect the city financially?
This is the, um, this is the same roster that, uh, we used when we got most, got our most recent coverage. So this is, this is what our coverage cost assumes currently.
Oh, this is our current cover, okay, I missed that, okay.
Hey, let me ask you a question, I, thanks for asking that. So, um, in, in the, in the roster, it says City Council Planning Commission and Police Department Volunteers, but there are other city volunteers that sometimes like the green up cleanup out it. It doesn't include that as well?
No, it doesn't, we, we, we.
Is that excluded?
Um, it was not previously covered. Um, what had previously been included was the Transportation Safety Committee. Um, and, um, I think, Parks Commission. Um, and we, um, we had some pushback from SAFE and sort of requests for that, from them to tighten up who, uh, who we include. It also requires a lot of, uh, paperwork to, to track this. Um, so, um, the reason that we, well, obviously, the, the reason that we're tightening, tightening it slightly is, um, one, because of that administrative burden, and two, sort of the justification, uh, in my mind, is these are all a set, like the city can't function without City Council, Planning Commission, and Police Department Volunteers. I think if we wanna have them, uh, really need, uh, workers' comp. We did, we did, uh, add, we have a separate volunteer, uh, insurance policy. Um, this is not a workers' compensation policy, it is a liability policy that pays, and we double the limit on that, I think from four hundred to eight hundred.
So, hopefully your folks can still.
We can have some.
That's a great explanation, thanks so much. All right, any other comments? I'll entertain a motion. Councilor Perry Miller?
I move to adopt resolution number twenty-two-five dash one twenty-eight dash R, extending City of Talent's workers' compensation coverage to volunteers of the City of Talent for the coverage year twenty-two-five-twenty-twenty-six, and rescinding resolution number twenty-two-four dash zero-nine-eight dash R.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number twenty-two-five dash one-two-eight dash R. It's in the City of Talent, workers' compensation coverage to volunteers of the City of Talent for the coverage year twenty-two-five dash twenty-two-six, and rescinding resolution number twenty-two-four dash zero-nine-eight dash R. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Councilor Pre Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Byers? Councilor Prestiza?
Yes.
Councilor Medina? Councilor Penomaroff?
Yes.
Councilor Cole?
Yes.
Thank you, Hector. Uh, I'm gonna ask those to move item eleven up now.
Um, should I extend the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I, I moved it to, we can only go till ten, right? Okay, I moved to extend the meeting until ten o'clock or as, as needed.
Second.
Uh, roll call please.
Councilor Pre Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Byers? Councilor Prestiza?
Yes.
Councilor Medina? Councilor Penomaroff?
Yes.
Councilor Cole?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna move, uh, item eleven up, um, with, unless there's objection. Uh, just because we have somebody who's been sitting and waiting for us to discuss the item. So, uh, if, if it, uh, please, as the council, I'll go ahead and, and take up the item from earlier testimony. Uh, from, we, uh, asking for discretionary funds, uh, in the amount of two thousand. Yes, and, um, thank you, um, for the skate park classic on October eleventh. Do we wanna put that on the agenda or do you wanna discuss it tonight?
I'm just wondering, was this discussed in, in our weekly report? Am I remembering that?
I, I did mention that, that I had some contact from the folks, um, who were, uh, organizing.
Did you, did you have some suggestions about, um, tailing efforts or something?
What I had said is that, um, we had, uh, staff had had some preliminary discussion about having a ribbon cutting, uh, in conjunction with the Harvest Festival. Um, and when, uh, Councilor Byers got wind of the, the folks planning this event, um, she suggested that that might be a more appropriate time to do a ribbon cutting. So, um, that's, I, I think that's what I mentioned.
So before we go any further with discussion, I'm sorry, I should've thought of this earlier. Um, so David Baugh, who, one of the original, original team members that, that really, like grassroots, have that thing built, he was a community member that sort of led the charge, approached me about this event. Um, and, uh, he asked if we would, if Town Business Alliance would receive donations for this event. And I told him I would, and, uh, we told, we told him we would and told him that we would without charging any fee. So essentially, they don't, there's no organization that can accept these sponsorships. So it would just be a pass-through at zero collection of funds to Town Business Alliance. And so with that said, um, because we had a bunch of sponsorships lined up, um, I want to check in with Dave. I, I feel like I should probably state it for the record, but I don't think it's a conflict of interest because there's no revenue in Town Business Alliance. And, and there won't be. Um, so, uh, I'm stating it for the record as an employee of Town Business Alliance that we are gonna pass through sponsorships for, um, for donations for this event, but we are not receiving any income.
Uh, the record should reflect, Attorney David Lowen was nodding his head.
Yeah, if that, if that was a question to me.
Before I take any questions, Councilor Penomaroff, I'm gonna give you Councilor Perry Miller.
Um, just 'cause I also work for the Town Business Alliance as a paid staff member, so, um, this would be a potential conflict for me, too.
Councilor Penomaroff?
I just wanna suggest, because we have an executive session, we have to get done before ten, that we put this on a future agenda, if that's okay.
My only concern is that this item is, this event is October eleventh. And so in order for them to start receiving sponsorship, they've already lined up. Um, oh, wait a minute, they, they're asking for sponsorship.
Yeah, they've already got, they can work with Town Business Alliance to, to get the money that's already coming from other sponsorships, this is just the city's portion.
Uh, okay.
Is, is it okay?
Then what I would suggest, that's right, I'm sorry, uh, so what I would suggest is that we put it on the next agenda, because again, my concern is that it's October eleventh. And, uh, and then they need to, um, look at all the sources.
Yeah, and, and I think it'd be nice to have some sort of rubric about what other folks are contributing and, you know, 'cause I get away with a little less than two thousand, that might be. Uh, more palatable, just the options.
All right, so does, uh, does anybody have any objections of asking that the city manager put this on the next agenda? Councilor Cole?
Just to clarify, that would be September seventeenth, correct? Wednesday, September seventeenth?
Yeah.
Just for the audience members as well?
With what?
Just for the audience members as well, September seventeenth.
All right, so, uh, September seventeenth, it'll be on the agenda, it'll actually be an agenda item. And would come up earlier in the agenda than this item. Yeah, all right.
Thanks.
So, no.
Mayor of the mayor?
Yeah.
I mean, I was gonna suggest that we just skip the commission and committee reports if there's nothing pressing and move straight to the executive session.
Have anything pressing to report? All right, um, so, and, um, so that leaves us with nothing else, hang on, let me look at my, uh, leaves us with nothing else. But this time, we're gonna go into executive, do I have a, a script for this?
While that's being found, can I run to the bathroom? Yeah. Oh, me too.
So, six, sixteen, seven, two. Me. Yeah.
Um, the City Council will now meet in executive session. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS one-nine-two-point-six-six-zero parentheses, two parentheses, D, which allows the council to meet in executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed, um, to attend the executive session. All other persons are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No final decision may be made in executive session. The confidential information discussed in executive session is not to be divulged outside the session without the express permission of the council as a body. At the end of the executive session, I will adjourn the executive session and reconvene a regular council meeting.
Would you have that today?
Sure.
Uh, go ahead and turn the record back on. Um, not necessarily, we can just convene, we can just, uh, adjourn from there.
I believe that, I believe that's the point.
Okay, so with that, then, uh, we will, um, we will adjourn when the executive session is concluded. When the executive session is concluded.